All right. Sorry about that, everybody. Not sure why that dropped out. All right, can everyone online see my screen and hear us all right? Yes.
Yes, okay.
Awesome. Let's get going. All right, I call the order. This this meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board on February twenty second, twenty twenty three at three oh three P M. Um, thank you all for being here. We got some new faces and we're gonna have some newer faces, hopefully in a moment here. Let's do introductions for everybody because we do have some new folks. I'll start around the table and then we'll go online. And I'm the economic development director for Grand County, and then it's August.
Hello, I'm Mary McGann. I'm liaison for the from the commission, Grand County Commission.
Melissa Stotz, Assistant Marketing Director for Economic Development.
V. G. McNetzer, Moab to Monument Valley, Commissioner.
Usain Denis, private sector, IDAT member.
Forrest Rogers, Moab Museum. Chris Wilson, and just joining the board today.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, Shelly Bryant, I am the liaison for the chamber.
Thanks for leaving, Lacy. Thank you for relieving. Thanks for leaving Lacey behind today, and I appreciate that. Sorry, Lacey, if you're listening.
Uh, Elisa Martin, signing director for the county.
Alan Turner, economic development specialist.
Uh, Karen, you wanna go online?
Uh, Karen Guzman Newton, private sector.
All right, then Kelly?
Kelly Thornton, Department of Workforce Services.
Jasmine?
Jasmine Duncan, Marytown and Castle Valley.
Megan?
Megan McFall, Regional Small Business Development Director and Workforce Development for Utah State.
Uh, Brad?
Yeah, Brad Bertashe, I'm the current current board member, but maybe not for long. And I represent the private sector, I believe.
That is um true. That is.
No, Brad's Brad's followers.
Yeah, that's a good point. Brad, Brad, Chris is you now. So you're officially a member of the public uh for the moment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Former board member. Appreciate it.
Okay, former board member.
Yeah, but still on the on the docket for the vacancy.
Okay.
And Laura?
Hey, everyone. I'm Laura Harris, Development Specialist of the Housing Authority and the Chair of the Housing Task Force.
All right, are there any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or expert communication that any members would like to share before we get started? Uh, hearing none, are there any citizens to be heard?
Um. The one thing that the Small Business Development Center has is we'd like to ask for a letter of support for the micro fund. We are submitting a grant for minority business development that would include, do the definition, all businesses within Grand County. Um, and I could send that over to Economic Development this week.
Yeah, let's bring that up on the future agenda item consideration. The meeting. Thanks, Megan. Um, presentations, if any, I know that Kelly had mentioned to me um our office that she doesn't have a ton of time, so wanted to hop into the front end of the meeting and then come to the presentation a little later. I saw a chat to Kelly to save the whole meeting up.
I can stay. Thank you.
All right, well, we can continue their regularly scheduled programming. Um, still, I'll start here on. So last time we had a meeting, we had Chris Barrett speak about the House Bill four sixteen that Lyman had run, bill running, that would change the sunset date on our economic diversification funding. Basically, basically, it would prematurely sunset the allowable use of TRT for economic diversification by three years. Originally, it was set for July first, twenty twenty six, and the bill changed that to be July first this year, twenty twenty three. Um, since we last met, our office and the county has done a lot of work kind of lobbying and going up to the State House. Um, but, you know, things aren't done yet. We went to the Urban Taxation Committee where the bill was passed on favorably to the House floor, where it was then voted on and was passed out of the House floor and out of the Senate. Um, from my last information, and generally, my understanding is that that bill's going through.
I haven't given up.
But Mary hasn't given up.
I haven't given up.
Uh, it's kind of our only play at this point is to try to extend the deadline. Um, but I'm unsure if the political chess pieces will align for us.
Yeah, I know. We sent the letter to all the members of the Revenue and Taxation Board. Last night, we sent that to ask them to at least amend to change the date of the sunset. And then I've, uh, John is calling, uh, Bickers, who is the Senate sponsor, asking him if he would do a friendly amendment and change the date, and I'm working with UAC, and UAC is going to go and meet with people along as well as Cody to try to defeat the bill or at least amend the bill. And so I am not going to give up until the vote is taken, and then I'll cry again.
Um, August, is it possible? Or and Mary, um, what was the what was the vote? What was the number?
The Revenue and Taxation Committee was six to three. Um, so there were several absent. We got both Democrats and a Republican junior representative out of Provo named Marsha Judkins, who was sympathetic to kind of our lobbying efforts and voted against the bill. Um, we're hopeful that she kind of becomes an ally of Grand County out of this process. Um, and then when it went to the actual House floor, it was sixty four to three with with, I think, just three Democrats opposing. So.
And I did not feeling the only way to defeat the bill is to work with the Republican. I did not lobby or talk to any of the Democrats. Because I think I could have would have had an opportunity to do that and might have been able to sway. We wouldn't have lost though dramatically. So I do have a meeting with all the Democrats in the Senate. And maybe they can help sway, just to change the sunset. Otherwise, I mean, this board is going to be relevant after July first.
Well, I can speak to that a little bit, because no matter what, we're gonna have the Royal County Grant Program, which is still the mandate of this board, which is guaranteed at this point, two hundred thousand dollars a year, um, plus any competitive award that we go after, which we've gotten the maximum over the last two years and have done a really good job of maximizing the impact of that program. Uh, so no matter what, that's still gonna be a focus. Um, and we still have um whatever money that we've had in the bank and reserves and whatever we will generate in the first six months of this year. So kind of next steps are let this political process play out. Last day of the legislative session is the third, next Friday. Um, and then from that point, we're we'll have some internal conversations. Um, if things don't go our way about exactly how to pivot, we make next steps and uh we'll keep y'all apprised and bring y'all in when there's a good opportunity for decision making and and important, but but things are are maybe less optimistic than they were looking last time we spoke in some ways, but also everything is still kind of technically up in the air. Any any other questions on that before we move on to other topics?
Quick question. Um, in your testimony, you talked about the three-year agreement with USU Small Business Development Center. Is that still locked in?
So Megan's here, and and so the language of that contract gives us flexibility if we don't have money basically to not fund it. However, I think we recognize that it's a really important relationship and that we're gonna, I think that's a big priority for us to figure out how we fund that regardless. Um, and so not sure how that's gonna be fulfilled, but I don't think there's an intention to to reneg on that agreement.
Representative Lyman claims that we can use promotional TRT tax to complete our agreement with USU. And so it's in the attorney's office right now to find out if if he is correct. Everybody I've talked to says he isn't. But that's why that was his selling. One of his selling points was, why do we need this when everything they want to do, the revolving loan fund and the development of the small business can be done without having this carve out? Which everywhere I talk to, maybe Stephen hasn't answered that. Or, and, you know, so if we but if, anyway, so.
Mary?
Yes.
Mary, are you are you saying that we may be able to do that and and other things like a revolving low fund with the TRT as it stands, because it does promote tourism and helps the tourism industry in in the in Grand County?
From from what I understand and how we've been hurt with the the TRT bill in the past, no, we couldn't. But Representative Lyman, one of the ways he sold it to get people to vote for it was saying that it wasn't going to take away our flexibility to do the revolving loan fund and agreement with USU. So Steve's office is now trying to see if like claim is true. That would be great. We would have been doing it years before. So it doesn't make sense. So.
So he he's saying legislative intent is that we're allowed to do that?
He just said we're allowed to do it.
Okay, is there any way we can get that legislative intent um solemnized in an email or something so that when the state of Utah sues us, we can say we did it in in good faith?
Upon his word.
I think I think we're gonna rely on the advice of our attorney here, who's working on this, and we're not gonna put him on the spot and ask him to explain his position at this point.
No, I understand, but but.
Yeah, no, you're on the you're on the you're on the on the, I think, money generally, in terms of how we're thinking about this, for sure.
It's it's frustrating, to say the least.
Oh, geez.
Um, Karen, did you have a question?
I I guess I was just sort of confused. Is it what is on the table? Is that we're not gonna be able to um use TRT funds for grant funding? Is that, I mean, but everything else is.
Basically, any any economic diversification use on is off the table for TRT generated after July first of this year, if the bill passes. So general money generated in the past that we haven't spent, money that's generated from from January until the end of June is still subject to the previous like allocation required or allowances, but if the bill passes um then uh the, well, I think I think the computers still work, this monitor is causing a problem. The the on I lost my train of thought. Sorry, the the monitor just chopped out in in the in the chambers here.
For going forward.
But going forward, yes, any future revenue generated July and beyond, I appreciate it, on would not be allowed to be budgeted or spent on kind of anything economic diversification or not explicitly allowed for economic diversification spend. So we would have the rectum and convention kind of bucket, the the establishing promotes tourism bucket, and then the mitigation bucket. So the diversification is just kind of jumped. If that makes sense. Um, so that doesn't necessarily mean that we don't have, we just don't have an ongoing, we wouldn't have an ongoing pool of resources. Uh, so there'd have to be decisions to be made about what's left. Um, and then how do we complement that with real kind of grants? And how do we kind of set priorities and make kind of decisions accordingly, now that we have all of that in the same place for the one forward?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry. So the questions, I feel like I read about the the whole being able to fund the search and rescue and all of those other things. That's
It didn't end up in the bill.
Okay, great. And he took the he took the portion that was taken from promotional side of TRT and put it into mitigation. He didn't change that. But he did change the the diversification.
All right, I'm gonna move on unless there's any following questions on this topic for now. Okay, thank you all. Is that a question?
Well, I think I have a lot of questions, but it's mostly because this is my first meeting. I feel like you can catch me up later.
Okay, sounds good. Um, on just a quick kind of preview of the agenda, um, so we're gonna go over some some meeting minute approvals, go over the final board position. Um, so that's the one formerly called the Rob Walker. These are many applicants, and then go for nomination selection of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, at which point I will hand over the meeting to the new chair. Um, go over the housing summit and kind of do a progress report on the housing fair event series, which was funded out of the Royal County Grant by his board earlier this year or last year, I guess. And then talk and talk about the future at the end here. Um, so let's hop right into it. Um, approval of December fourteenth, twenty twenty two, and January twelfth, twenty twenty three, and January twenty fifth, this twenty twenty three meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for December fourteenth, January twelfth, and January twenty fifth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Karen, seconded by Forrest. Um, any discussion, any changes? Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Keep myself something.
You can do whatever you'd like.
Okay, so, uh, Chris Forrest. Um, uh, for Karen, was that an aye?
Yes, that was an aye.
And then Kelly, I think that was an aye as well. Um, and an abstinence, and Dennis, I didn't hear your vote.
I'm I'm, I don't wanna lose my.
Okay, so you're gonna abstain as well. All right, so motion carries. Uh, with four votes, four, two abstinence, one absent, because we don't have that position built. Thank you so much. Um, all right, consideration and nomination of applicants to fill out economic development advisory board position that expired September thirty first, twenty second. Um, so this is for about the most general role we have, a member of the public with those in Grand County. Uh, this is Rob Walker's former role. Um, we have in the applicant pool, Brad, who formerly occupied the seat that Chris is in, Brittany Milton, Carolyn Conan, Melissa Jeffers, Michael List, and Steve Getz. Um, I'd I'd kind of open up the floor to any discussion or motion unless.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to vote in Melissa Jeffers.
Okay, mo- motion by Shelly Bryant to nominate Melissa Jeffers to the board position. Do I have a second?
I would second.
All right, motion by Shelly, seconded by Karen. Any discussion?
I guess I'd just like to have a little bit of discussion before we go ahead and have us on it. I I would be happy to support Melissa. Um, I spent a couple hours last night watching all the videos and all the interviews and reading all the applications, so I wanted to be up to speed for this conversation. Um, I think we have a lot of great applicants. Um, so there are many, there are several applicants that I would support, and Melissa is one of them. Um, so I'm not trying to throw a wrenching works of your emotion or anything like that at all.
It's not so worth it for.
Yeah, yeah. Um, some of the other applicants that I think are particularly well qualified um include Carolyn and Brad. Um, so those are, that's my kind of shortlist. I think we have a lot of great applicants. Um, but I just kind of want to put that out there and have a little bit of discussion if other people are interested. Before we go ahead and start uh voting on the motions.
Yeah, for sure. Any other comments? Or discussion?
I would echo Chris's comments. Um, it's a it's a quite robust uh pool of candidates um with really varied experiences. Um, personally, I, like Chris, would include Melissa, Brad, and Carolyn as my top three, now that we're starting to talk about our top. I I think each of them brings something a little bit different. It's what we want. We want some diversity. Um, some have more experience in this than others, and at this point, as this organization can take, the the team, the staff team continues to grow and evolve and is this board grows or at least evolves. I I think that there are some, uh, there's some expertise there that we could really use. Um, at least among the three um candidates that I have identified.
Well, thank you for us. Any other comments, discussion?
My shortlist is a little different. Um, I don't need to name names. Um, I would just challenge us that who we're putting on the board that we are creating a diverse enough personality and experiences that we're not just all sitting around agreeing with each other. Um, I know that makes easier meetings, but I do want to be able to hear multiple perspectives. Um, what I like about Melissa is that I mean, the attorney mind in general is, I think, is a huge advocate. I mean, there's a lot that goes into all the these political laws and having that knowledge base does actually, I think, help this board be effective when we're going after lawmakers or whatnot. So I I think she offers a good good combination and balance uh between the two sides of the coin, and that's what I like so much about her. You know, you get one side of the, with a couple of them, and the other side of the coin, the other, I think she is a great middle ground that will offer us a really strong perspective from both sides. So that's what I liked about her.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
Well, yeah, I get some some maybe comments. Every individual interview, I just listen all of them. They're really all strong in some aspects. It's difficult to decide about it. Some has big experiences, some has good voice outs, and the other ones has good ground, like a lot law, and then the expertise in other regions. And to me also, that's really one of the attractive part, like uh some of the candidates has different point of views out of box, and looks like to me, uh, I'm more tend to be uh going to use my role for the ones who came and saw other regions and then barely in here. And they have more, to me, looks like have different different perspective on the on the region and about what we are doing here deciding. So it looks like, man, that's that's the way I'm gonna use my choices in this, so. Yeah.
Um, Karen or Kelly, do you care to comment on this or any discussion?
No, I su- I support Melissa, and I thank Brad for his service on the board. He's brought a lot of experience. It's been really valuable. So I would, I he'd be on my shortlist as well.
And I'm in the same um in the same boat. I I also that you talk about diversity or bringing a different voice again. Uh, and at our last meeting, I supported Michael. I still do support Michael, and I do support Melissa um and Brad, so those are my my three.
Thanks, Karen. Um, so at this point, you know, we either vote on this motion or someone has to make a substitute or 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 a alternate motion. Um, so I'm I'm happy to call a vote on this motion. Yes, we're seconded. Um, so I'm happy to call a vote on this motion. Unless anybody would like to make an alter motion. All right, I'm gonna call for a vote then. Um, all in favor of Melissa Jeffers as nominate, to be nominated for members of the public of this Grand County, uh, please raise your hand and say aye. All right, well, that passes unanimously. Great. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. This has been, you know, a somewhat drawn out process, but I think a good one, and we've gotten some really good candidates. Applicants, and I look forward to the next steps of what happens um after all of this. After the legislative session and and beyond. Um, okay, so kind of some housekeeping. Um, I've been kind of sharing this for a while and and as we've been kind of transitioning membership. Um, I think it's prudent for us to have Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary as both bylaws, um, and ideally someone who's not myself. Um, so, you know, I think Melissa is the only person who's not here. Um, but I'd like I'd like to kind of open up to the floor, kind of just for some discussion. If anybody wants to throw their hat in the ring, express interest, not for any particular position or just for an officership uh in a format. Yeah, I'll just open it up.
I'm happy to help. Sorry, however way again.
Okay, thank you, Shelly.
I just have a question. What? How do you envision the board chair being able to assist you and Ben?
Yeah.
Um, and I guess that relationship is is an important one. It's
Yep.
So I just, what do you guys? What do you people?
Yeah, um, for, so I mean, you know, the board chair of of these kind of voluntary boards, a little bit like the board chair of like a non-profit board, for example, but um, you know, I think having someone who can speak kind of not on behalf of, but but with confidence about kind of what we're getting into, the context of the county, the context of our office. Um, you know, showing up at additional meetings, we might have a roundtable, I think, such as we've had on childcare in the past. Um, meeting with us, you know, like the week before a meeting to go over the agenda. Um, that's the main, that's the main role of the chair, right, is to is to be the agenda czar, basically. Um, and also be the manager of the meeting and motions and tabling and all the rest, right? So I think being being able to be confident and holding that that space despite all of the intricacies and nuances of reverence rules, and we will help with that along the way. Um, I think those are the main things that that we look for support in, and then and then I think also um you know, just to be able to speak frankly about what we're working on and how we can move forward and and guidance, I think, is also very useful, guidance and advice. Those are the things I think we like. Ben, is there anything else that?
Yeah, um, I think that speaks to most of it. I think um, an ideal board chair is someone who's going to spend time, if not, you know, going to uh commission meetings and watching every item, which is a huge expectation, but just uh working with us to understand the policy in play, different mandates we've been handed down, and why we are pursuing programs we are or did, why they make sense, and kind of understanding uh political realities going forward. It's a lot of facilitation. It's a lot of helping us get our message out, helping us and being stakeholders, um, especially when groups are not on the same page. Um, so I think that's someone who's here to do that would be most.
Yeah, I think lastly, also, like managing this board is one of the things we do. It certainly helps to have someone being like, okay, we're doing the agenda, we're meeting on Thursday before the meeting, and making sure that this board provides value and considers the time of all the volunteers who are spending, you know, an hour or two of their time every month, you know, outside of their normal work schedule or the priorities. And so we want to make sure that they're helping us provide everything we want to this board and membership, and then ultimately to the commission and to the department, to the county's kind of overall goals and ambitions.
Yeah, we definitely need someone um prodding us to do agenda review and get things together a few days before the meeting. We generally get things to you all the day before, and that's never our intention, and it's always the case.
The organized and preparation.
Yeah. Uh, cool. So Shelly and Forrest, you expressed some kind of, well, I guess you'd say, I'm sorry. Um, is there, are you are you expressing openness to to being an officer? Or is that just a question about what you're looking for?
Um, it was an information seeking question.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Forrest.
August, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Can I make it? Can I nominate Forrest to be, uh, the chair?
You can, you can make that motion.
I second it.
All right. Motion by Karen. Alright, motion by Karen, second by Dennis.
Such a good for asking questions.
Any, any, any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Forrest if he's interested.
And, and all those papers listed, are you comfortable?
You know, this usually happens when you're not at a meeting.
I was gonna nominate Melissa.
I, earlier on told, uh, a year ago, I told Ben and August that I'd be willing to step in as vice chair. Things are a little bit more settled where I am. And if it was the intent of the, the board members themselves. Um, I would, I would serve. Um, I've got some experience that both August and Ben know, and I know all the talent that's sitting around the table. So. I would accept the nomination.
Okay. Thanks, Martin. Any other discussion on that?
I just, um, I would support Forrest. I've seen him, um, this last year. You know, work with you, August and, um, and Ben, and I think he's very valuable, um, and. Steady and organized. Um, and I think he'd be a great chair.
Thank you, Karen.
Well, I think.
I mean, I was only gonna say that I like the idea of having someone be the chair who's been on the board for a while and can. Therefore speak, you know, to the public and to other interested groups. You know, about the intent and the work of the board over a longer period of time with, with more accuracy. So I, I like that idea and I like to fill that role.
Anything for the discussion before I call for a vote? Um, all in favor of, um. This appointing, uh, Forrest to the position of chair on the Economic Development Advisory Board, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Forrest abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Uh, motion carries. Forrest, you're the chair now. I hate to say it.
Be, be careful of what you wish. So the next agenda item would be discussion of the grand summit.
We saw Vice Chair and Secretary on there.
Oh, gosh.
I'm gonna do it all by yourself.
I turned the page. That was my problem.
Yeah.
Then I would ask for nominations. Or vice chair or for someone to volunteer to serve as vice chair. And the floor is open.
The non-voting member make the motion?
Um, probably not. Nice job.
I'm happy to help in any capacity. Yes, I'd also just be okay being a more board member, but the silence hurts my ears a little.
I feel the same way. I mean, I would be happy to take on either of the other roles. I also, like I said about you, I like the fact that we have people. The people have been on the board with more experience. I'd be more than happy to support someone who's been on the board for longer and in many ways that would be appropriate, but I also. Be happy to do it. I can't help.
I make a motion for Karen to be the vice chair.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
We're open for discussion.
Karen, are you willing to be the vice chair?
No, I would be willing to help out any way that I could. Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Then all in favor of the nomination of Karen to be served as vice chair. Um, as moved by Shailene and seconded by Denise. Say aye.
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 Motion carries. Do we need numbers?
Um, ideally. Yeah, that makes it easier.
Okay, raise your hand, please. We have four in this room. And two up there, six motion carries.
Karen, did you vote?
I'm, I'm abstaining.
Okay.
So we have five. Five affirmative votes, so. Welcome to the team, Karen.
Thank you, Forrest.
And then perhaps Ben, you and August could describe what the secretary must.
Yeah, so, um, in the, so we've had this role, this role, ideally the secretary. Um, tracks minutes, both counts, all that kind of stuff. We're not requesting that the secretary. Puts together the final minutes that we go ahead and, um, put online and apply. You know, the lobbying act and everything, but, but I think exactly what you're describing is making sure that we have someone's tracking. Who's making motions, who's seconding, who's voting. And ensuring that we actually have the minutes to reach meeting and all that kind of stuff, I think is the main, is the main point. So just keeping, keeping us on track with the agenda. Tracking who's, who's making what motions and votes, uh, is the main part of, of the secretary. And then. Ideally, tracking that, so you can track stuff, yeah.
Then the floor is open for nominations or volunteers.
I'd like to nominate Shailie for secretary.
That's what I get.
Is there a second? Your seconds? Discussion?
Are you up for it?
Yes, I will be happy to help in whatever capacity.
No further discussion? Then call for a vote. All in favor of appointing Shailene as the. Secretary of the Economic Development Advisory Board, say aye.
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 I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining.
Do I have to keep track of those votes now?
Uh, I think officially, we're starting right now. Um, and we might as well state for the record your name.
Yeah, my name's Shailie. Sorry if you just don't end, but Shailie bright. It happens often.
There's a name and a second.
There's something in somewhere, yeah.
Um, so Denise.
Yes.
Forrest, Chris.
Karen. Everyone but Jim says six, four, Kelly.
Six, four.
Six, four, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, so Shailie, welcome. Welcome to the.
Four. Oh, five, four, yeah, alright.
I was pretty confused by counting. I was like.
Five, four, what if eight, you're opposed? We're all doing great.
There we go. We're gonna be alright, guys.
They're recorded.
And Shailie, thanks. I think that your involvement. As the chambers representative, it's gonna be a great connection and a way for us to collaborate, be aware of what each other is doing.
I'm hoping so, yeah.
Um, alright, then we will move to the. Next item, which is the discussion of the grand summit, twenty twenty-three. On three, one or two?
Three, one.
Three, one.
You're correct. Yeah, so, uh, you're looking at the grand summit website, grandsummitmoof.com. Raise your hand if you have to.
I'm so.
It should be everyone.
No way.
I know you're going to some far off place, right? Should have known. Thank you. I see you online. Thank you, Megan. So tickets are still on sale. If you use a promo code FRIEND, leave all caps, uh, you can get ten dollars off. Um, the summit price is definitely higher than last year. Um, we are bringing a, a new caliber event this year, so we're, we're hoping that you all will buy the ticket and see for yourself why it's worth it. We're also kicking off the event the night before this year, February twenty-eighth. We had, if you're better than you, we're gonna have some hors d'oeuvres and drinks and it'll be your first chance to. Talk with folks who are gonna be at the summit, start your networking and just have a great time at a really cool new venue. Um, your ticket does include that. If folks are only able to make it to one event or the other, they can let me know. It certainly make that happen. But if you buy a full ticket, um, a full price ticket, then you get everything. Uh, we're gonna be talking about, we're gonna start the day rather than talking about our economic development infrastructure. Um, that's basically just the things that our office has been working on the past year, year and a half, just kind of setting the stage. Not just for economic diversification, but more just holistic economic development in general. What gaps are we, are we targeting? What gaps still exist? Megan's definitely gonna help us with the latter and understanding. What our workforce development needs are. She has a great focus on that. So she's gonna be one of the panelists on that first panel discussion called the Trailwork Blazing. After that, we're gonna go on to a panel discussion that Elisa Martin is gonna be on, our planning and zoning director. That's gonna be a really great discussion. Um, it's gonna feature representatives from the development community, uh, from, uh, State Land Trust. From, uh, Moab City and Planning and from the Realtors of, uh, uh, Danersh. Yes, it's a film. Uh, okay, yeah. Um, I wanna mention in the panel discussion in the morning, that's, we're gonna highlight the childcare and housing work that this body has supported. Um, and so Rob will be speaking kind of to the childcare piece and Caitlin's gonna be speaking to the programs that we've supported. The road crossing, um, and then we're trying to get, if we can, someone from every telecom to speak about the internet. Uh, expansion that they, they have planned for the next several years. Uh, that's really important to kind of. That whole, the infrastructure. Go on. Yeah, so we're, we're also gonna talk about, um, going back to the panel that Elisa's gonna be on, talking about. Commercial and industrial space and why we have so much that's not really being put to its full potential. I'm hoping that that'll be a, a really interesting discussion. It's kind of. One of those questions that I think people think about comes after housing and we wanna start kind of having that discussion now and asking questions of the audience to see what they. Think. Certainly, we have a lot of landowners who will have. Um, we're also gonna have a presentation, uh, from Craig, who is the, um, Craig IG. I know, actually, I was saying, they have to keep you, I'm not sure. He's the chief financial officer at Synergy. He's gonna talk about his past business experiences. Doing what he calls lean business. Um, we're gonna have some presentations during lunch, um, kind of laid back. I know the chamber is gonna have some remarks during lunch. We're gonna have a panel discussion on energy. We're also gonna have this really cool workshop in the afternoon. I'm excited for. It's called Utah's New Americans Task Force. This was an initiative spearheaded by the governor's office and the. Economic Development Corporation of Utah. They put together a comprehensive task force of folks from all over Utah to understand. How is it that new Americans, i.e. people moving here from other countries can fit into the economic future of Utah? Utah is a huge leader in new Americans. We see people moving here every year. And so the question becomes, how can we? Help accommodate them and put them in some of the roles that we really need to see built in our economy. So that's gonna be a workshop talking about what the recommendations are and then how Grand County can make those recommendations actionable within its own. Um, we're also going to talk about our responsible recreation program and, uh, how we are guiding guests, whether it's through that. Through business certifications, through our partnership with Wander Maps. And then our, we're going to end the day, uh, talking about marketing. And we did put it at the end of the day to keep everyone there. That's what everyone wants to hear about. And then there's gonna be a prize.
A prize?
Yeah, it's gonna be a prize. Some prizes, right? I can't tell you what it is. You just have to go.
A little suggestion, the spokespersons in this all panels, can we have it also on the agenda? That's gonna be really helpful.
Absolutely, yeah. So it's on the website. If you go to speakers.
Okay.
It doesn't actually say, uh.
Presenters.
Yeah, thank you. It doesn't actually say which presenter is part of which, but the program, which will be sent out shortly before the event to show you. So we've got some really exciting folks from all over. Um, I'm glad to take any questions you have on the event. But if there's one takeaway, it's by a fan.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How do you choose the speakers?
So we get together and, oh, Cory's, that's just great. So last year we had, uh, since we took over what was the Candyland's Business Summit. Last year, we brought it back after a few years hiatus. Um, we've done it differently twice now, so in the future, we're still trying to. Fine tune the system. Last year, we had a steering committee for the business summit. They helped us define the topics and they helped us define. Who we should reach out to for speakers. This year, we worked with, um, some event organizers that we run into and other events that are put on by stakeholders. We run the state, they're called powerhouse events. They're great. They do things like the outdoor rec summit. They helped work with us on. The topics that we wanted to talk about and then we kind of got together and said, who do we think could speak to that locally? August and I have worked on getting those speakers and then bringing in those like state or even federal perspectives. They've worked on those larger names. Um, so it's always a collaborative process, but we've done it differently the past two years. And I definitely think in the future, if we keep doing this, bringing back the steering committee will be great. This year, we kind of with legislation, there was a moment there where we weren't sure if we were gonna do this or not. And when we decided to, we were pretty behind the ball compared to what we were last year for planning, so. Um, this is definitely throwing it together quicker than I want it to be. I still think it's really good, though. I think a fault to that is also as a part of sponsorship, um, you know, for the, for the higher tier sponsorship. We've been trying to. There's been opportunities where folks can get on a panel, um, to get to a certain tier. And so that's helped us offset the cost of. On the event, which we hope will ultimately be neutral to our budget, um, and ticket sales and sponsorships, um, set the costs, throwing it.
In the last business summit, I do remember there were some participants by economic. Uh, Utah Governor's Office Economic, you know, people like Ryan Starks, which one is the? He made some remark by his talking. Also, there are some commitments. You, you've been talking during the meeting. Is there any recap that we have to do, do you think, bring it up to the meeting because? Looks like there were some different really, uh, important people who, who joined us as a spokesperson or, you know, to be presenters, so. Is there any related things from last year to this year or?
Yeah.
After all this business summit, some, I don't know, things popped up as an example, like, you know, that's. Summit brought this to table and then we accepted it and then this is a result thing. Is, is there any?
I, I'd say childcare is a good example of that. That kind of surfaced in conversations at the networking reception and between people and. Um, that was brought to my attention several times by several folks just in one-on-one conversations and that kind of kicked off at least our. In some ways, an initial exploration of that. And that was, we had zero, yeah, we had nothing in that arena at this time last year and, you know, I think we've. Created quite a bit of impact in a pretty quick period of time. I mean, pretty much everything, to be honest. Like, I think when we did this summer last year, our office was pretty newly formed in a lot of ways. And, um, it seems like we're a little, uh. Have we, we're a little more callous as I, I would say.
Well, yeah, that's the question for everyone else who attended last meeting. I'll see, the outcome is really important, so. Uh, last question very quick. I wanna give some space for everyone else, but what is the current situation, the participants? Do, do you see the numbers? Is that, is there interest in it enough?
And with, like, in, in attendance?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely. I think that we did a lot more promotion last year, so we were at a better ticket number than we were. Uh, last year than we are now. So we're, we're at like, what, eighty percent sold? Yeah, over that. We're, we're like close to a hundred twenty tickets. Capacity is like around one sixty, so it's already looking like it's gonna be a pullout summit. We just. Like to sell it out because I know last year we had concerns of people away. This year, we have more capacity. It's just better to get the word out before the day of, so people aren't showing up. I'm not sure if they can make their nuts. But yeah, we're definitely seeing the same amount of interest as last year. We've just had less time with the model.
That was so exciting. Last time, I really enjoyed that. Also, we will catch the same thing though.
Thank you.
I have really positive thoughts with this.
Thank you.
Are there? Did you say something about drinking? Sorry, did I hear that? Are your shuttles to that event? That's how you, sorry, I am an incredibly responsible driver. But.
But not everyone is.
But, yeah, the police are working really hard. They're, yeah, I'm just throwing it out there because if you're gonna have, have many people come into an event that's up three thirteen. Driving back to town and you are offering drinks, which I love to do. Definitely, I feel like you should offer some sort of shuttle service.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
County has a little bus that I saw shaking around.
Oh, that's the, uh. Yeah, the grand centers.
I don't know, I saw.
They, they actually have two buses, but they're, they're specifically allotted for elderly needs.
Are they?
Yeah. They're funded, they're funded through a different fund. They're not funded in.
Yeah, at all, like they're, they're grand center and the aging. Just saying.
For different.
Fortunately, I'm on the council for aging, so I learned a lot about the different bunches.
There is, oh, it's just.
Right.
It's a lot, so. Hey, you guys, do you mind if I ask?
So I know you hired out a promotional company to do this event? Is that? So I'm, I guess I'm a little confused as to why you feel you're behind the April with the legislation when this was already farmed out.
I don't, and I think that actually gave us I think that was more that there was a week where we were unsure of if we were going to proceed. We just, the timeline, like we started putting ads out in November last year and we didn't start really promoting it in earnest until January. And so that's, that's really more of a us problem than a them problem. I think we're fine. I think Ben's closer to the numbers and it's a little more interesting than getting those ticket sales.
Well, and I know in the future, the Chamber would like to be a bigger partner
Yeah.
of this event. Like, that's a huge thing that the Chamber wants to be a part of. And I also think like one thing we need to, I mean, this doesn't matter right now, when we do a committee earlier, later, whatever. I think that we have a lot of really smart people in this town that maybe we don't need to farm out most of these discussions and and speaking to non-locals. There's, I think, a lot of experts right here that can speak to some of this stuff and it gives them an opportunity to develop our economy. So that's one thing I would just challenge to be part of this, should be local experts.
It's also a little bit like a good opportunity for Grand County and Moab City. It's the stage where if you want to market something like I would like to use this opportunity as like what we need in the Grand County socially, housing, the other needs, whatever it is, we can name it and then we can maybe bring up hey, our county looking for this, this, this missing part. And if there are some I don't know, investors or any ideas that we want to pull into the basket, like that can be a good marketplace. I don't know, do we have any idea with that?
Well, I think a lot of folks are also interested in showing up to this. It's an opportunity to speak to Grand County as well. And I think that's really what allows us to make it cost neutral is that there, you know, we have values of community and they're willing to pay to speak to us. A lot of ways or communicate with us, so. So that's, I think, also part of that. But yeah, I hear both of your thoughts for sure.
Just some thoughts, but
Yeah.
Help you plan an extra.
Yeah, for sure.
Any further questions or discussion?
Good job, guys. That's a lot of work.
Yeah. Feels better this time.
We should follow up, maybe have a shuttle for the people who want a new phone.
Yeah, we'll listen again.
Moab, express, maybe they're not driving in the evenings to the airport. I don't, it's a great idea.
Good time, Tom McKay, good business, it's local.
Totally, cool.
I'm not allowed to say those things, but that's my idea.
Okay. We look forward to seeing everybody on a week from tonight.
That's right.
A week from tonight.
A week from yesterday.
A week from today's.
Yesterday, tomorrow.
Will be that.
A week from today is the start of
Right.
From yesterday is the evening.
Yeah.
Yesterday, today, tomorrow.
I can tell where everybody's focused right now and it's less on the agenda than on the social gathering where where conversations of them all the hardware. Yeah. August, I'm not sure who is providing the progress report for the Moab Housing Fair event. So Laura there?
Yes, that is me. I'm just going to, hi, everybody. You've probably, to the board members who have been around for a while, I've been in your hair for the last few months with various funding, but I just wanted to kind of quickly share the progress so far with the Housing Fair series that has been going on this winter. So thank you again for generously funding these opportunities to give the public ideas about housing and share what has been happening with housing efforts between the local governments, between nonprofits, what are challenges, what's momentum that we can use going forward. So just wanted to provide the board with an update. I wrote a lot, so please feel free to read it on your own time, but I'm just going to summarize a few few points and share the successes and where we're heading with the rest of the funds to continue this series. So it's been a busy last couple of months. I guess it's almost March now, but we held our, the very first housing fair in December at the mark and what we envisioned was we had a first session for the idea of bringing businesses together, employers, interested citizens to talk about what they desire in workforce housing. How does that work? Who has done it successfully? And essentially just getting ideas from other folks in a roundtable session. We collaborated with Lacey Shumway of the Chamber with that. She moderated and we had about I'd say thirty to forty folks show up, which was awesome. Really stimulating conversation. Just being able to bring everybody together and talk about their struggles, successes, et cetera. And then we moved into a larger platform. We had delicious food catered from Hidden Cuisine, which was awesome. And we also provided an activity, like a workshop for the Action Plan, which is the guiding section of the housing plan that gets adopted by the city and the county. So that helped us to work on updating what the citizens and the attendees felt was important when we're focusing on affordable housing growth here in Moab. So that was great. And then we also had really compelling presentations by both the city and the county. So Alisa and Emily Campbell presented on behalf of the county and then we heard from Kalen Jones of City Council, Kaya Marionfield, who's Planning Commission, and Carly Castle. And so in total, we had between sixty and seventy people show up, which was fantastic. It was great. It really was a positive environment and was exciting to be able to share what's been happening the last couple of years and be able to bring people together, especially after COVID, because the Housing Task Force used to hold educational events pretty frequently prior to COVID. So that, before my time even, so that was in December and then January, we had a quick turnaround and we partnered pretty have, I say we, I should say the subcommittee. I've been, I've had fantastic partners who are all part of the task force. So Ben Alter has had his hand in it. We've had help with a couple folks at Community Rebuilds, Noel, who's the Vista, the county, Karen, Eric, they were at Ecologic Moab and a couple other folks here and there have been pretty vital and we've been calling it the housing, oh, and Caitlin as well, the Housing Fair Subcommittee. So in January, we partnered with the Grand County School District with Jeremy Spalding and we had a family housing resources session. Essentially, we held that at the middle school and we had a dinner and a couple presentations and we invited a lot of community organizations and partners that are all tied into housing, no matter what housing situation you're in. So Kelly was there with DWS. We had the Multicultural Center. We had the Sustainability Department at the city. We had let's see, we had State Farm Insurance there. We had the Recycling Center there and we split the night into three sections of I'm looking, I'm a renter and I want more resources. I'm renting currently but looking to buy in Moab and I'm a homeowner. What's next? Like, how do I maybe receive have a renter or be a landlord or enhance my home? And so we provided really robust resources that the attendees were able to glean information on, whether they're looking for a house, whether they're renters and they need legal services or need to learn how to read a lease. What recycling programs and trash programs do we have in Grand County? And it was just really interesting, the breadth of knowledge that we had in the rooms for the community was awesome. We got really detailed presentations from all these folks and we were able to compile that. And the information is now on the Moab Housing website, so people can look back and utilize those resources at whatever time they'd like. I will say the January session was a little less attended. We had maybe twenty-five to thirty folks. So that's something that we will revisit is just timing and there were other conflicts, but we felt like the information and the content was super quality and that was a really exciting event. So flash forward, we took February off a little bit. It was quite a lot of work to logistically plan to pretty large events back to back. So right now, our subcommittee is starting to cook up a new, the final event in our series, at least for this winter. And it's going to be how to develop an ADU. So we are going to be working with our county city partners, designers, other developers to bring them all into one room and really talk step by step about building an ADU in Grand County and potential problems and financing and designs and just a lot of information about that. So still a little bit TBD. But we're looking forward to bring that subset of folks into this series. And we also have been talking about actually repeating the family housing series, family housing resources session that we did in January. Maybe again in the summer, actually, just because we felt like it was really quality information and we'd love to have more people, have it reach more people. So we also are looking to provide some evergreen resources and produce those resources. We're really interested in partnering with the Multicultural Center and seeing what predominantly, like what their Spanish-speaking clients are in need of in terms of housing information and being able to provide, you know, potentially translating, translated services or applications or informational videos or again, we want to work with the Multicultural Center to see what their clients need the most and how we can reach especially that demographic of Spanish speakers in terms of how to improve their housing situation or how we can help leverage that. So as you can see on the report, we still have about seven thousand dollars from this grant, which we're very grateful to have and we're really looking towards hopefully after this ADU session, putting those funds towards long-term investments. So, you know, resources, educational materials that can be used at any point, like I said, with those Spanish resources, et cetera. So we're still talking about this as a group, both the Housing Fair Subcommittee and the Housing Task Force. We've been brainstorming more ways of how we can expand our outreach using these funds. So it's been very rewarding and fun to be able to use these funds the last couple of months and reach over a hundred individuals so far with these events. So just looking to do more. So thank you so much. Just wanted to share this report and as per the grant contract, I will also be sharing a larger report towards the end of the cycle. But just wanted to share and you'll be seeing advertisements and we invite you to also attend our ADU session. We, it's slated for March thirtieth, could be subject to change, but end of March for that one. So happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
How do you get on that? Sorry.
Go ahead.
Forrest.
Don't go ahead.
You're the chairman.
You go ahead.
Thank you. How do you get on the ADU list to know whether it is the date that it's going to be happening? Is there a newsletter, email?
We will definitely be advertising and blasting, so we'll make sure that we can send it to this board and we'll see it, you'll see it around. I think it'll be the thirtieth, but details to come.
Okay.
We put it up all on our social media too. In Grand County, next, we'll be advertising for it.
Yep.
Did you just say all official videos?
Sometimes you just gotta set them down.
Megan, did you have a question? Jasmine?
I must have just flicked my hand, sorry.
Laura, I was just curious if in the ADU event, if you're going to include anything about the IADU. Does anybody showing any interest in using those as well?
I definitely think we're going to talk about the difference of those and in terms of financing, how much different that is, that looks between an internal and external. So definitely think it's pertinent to include. We don't have you know, the full agenda yet, but I think that would be important. So yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Before I so rudely interrupted you, I just wanted to say, Laura, thank you for providing the written report in advance, so we had a chance to review it. It helped us sort of prepare for your remarks. And we appreciate that. Are there any other questions for Laura or comments, Dennis?
Well, first of all, that was great event. Personally, I do leave since a while every day this housing issue with our current employees. And this year, we have additional five people out of Grand County. They came to work with us. And the biggest issue we are living since a while is housing for rental, either for buying. There are some opportunities for often. I just watched the presentation that you linked in your files, Laura. That's amazing. I didn't know many, many, many opportunities laying down here. But for me, there are just two things for the next coming event. I think we need to gather more people. Who directly needs those opportunities? Of course, ADU is one of my interests individually too. So to me, it looks like we need to increase the number of participants as needed person. So what I would suggest maybe knocking the door at the hotels, most probably. These are the really heavy industry workers, I would say. Maybe for, sorry for my misspelling, but restaurants, there are many people, they're really out of housing opportunities. So we, we, I know many people around me, they're really looking for opportunities every day in life. So I don't know if it makes sense, but we need to promote this thing maybe in the level of public to gain more people to benefit from these opportunities.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. I think that was one thing that as the team and I were debriefing, it's definitely important for us to advertise even more. And I think we could do a better job with specifically reaching certain demographics that might need that information the most. So thank you for that.
Laura, maybe you could say a little bit more about the idea of videos that you referenced with the remaining balance on the grant?
Sure. So just an idea that we've been tossing around is hiring a videographer to be able to produce types of resources such as like, how do you apply for affordable housing or what do I look for when I'm signing a lease? So those are resources that you can come back to anytime you need. And so we'd really be interested in providing that both in English and Spanish to have accessible for many clients of different realms. So yeah, that's an idea that I've been interested in pursuing and you know, videographers can be expensive and translators can be expensive. So I think this would be a really great way to use some of the funding.
Great, great. Any other questions or comments?
Great job, Laura.
Thank you, everybody.
Again, thanks, Laura.
Thanks for your support. We'll be sure to send the the final session your way and would love for anyone available to attend.
And August, what does that report do?
We have to submit the report for this fiscal year, which this is a part of, I think, this summer. By the end of the summer.
Okay.
In order to be eligible for the next.
Great, great, okay.
Thanks.
The fight, I'm sorry. The final agenda item is considerations of future agenda items. And August, you put that on the agenda.
Starts, yeah. I think big things are you know, next week, maybe end of March. So at that point, you know, our next week, maybe end of March. Um so at that point, we'll have had the grand summit. Uh the legislative session will have ended. I will have gone on vacation. Um I want to come back fully refreshed and ready for all that is the reality of the new world. Um and you know, I think my goal, hopefully, that internally we will have kind of sorted out what are the options before us and seek input from this board at whatever step is prudent, whether that is, okay, now we need to look at what's available from our resources. Um whether it's rural county grant or otherwise, um and you know, look at our priorities that we've set so far and, and kind of, I think, first step is map out um this year, this fiscal year for the rural county grant. How much money do we have left? What are the programs that we've been talking about and how can we make sure that we um allocate those funds effectively before the end of this year and then, you know, set ourselves up well for the next year. Um and then I think generally, um you know, we've been talking about for a long time, kind of trying to scope out what would a effective um kind of planning process look like? What kind of questions would we want to ask? Do we want to bring in consultants and otherwise? And I think that that's kind of been a circular conversation that every time there's some change kind of don't move forward, but I think increasingly, no matter what, whether it's an internally led planning effort, partnering with the chamber, bringing in some kind of a facilitator or otherwise, I think that's increasingly really, really valuable. One of the biggest things we heard from the legislators was um well, we don't know, if we continue this money, we don't know where, how it would be spent. And I think sometimes planning is kind of dismissed as a waste of a hundred fifty thousand dollars or whatever for a piece of paper. Um but I think in this case, it, it's, it's our mandate as a department that's supported by the community ideally. That's the point of it. And um something we can show to other people who aren't here, say this, we have, we, we hashed it out internally. We prioritize and that's what we're gonna go after. So we go for resources from the state or the federal government or other partners that, that were able to quickly say, actually, legislature, we do have a five-year plan for what we'd like to do. And these resources are gonna allow us to do that. Uh and I think that was a, a, something I really regretted not having at my fingertips during some of those, those meetings. Um so that's a, that's a priority for me. I don't know exactly how we move forward on that. I know I'm, I'm, that's a priority. I think that there's a, there's a clear demand. Um you know, in a lot of these conversations, that economic diversification in general and um economic development in particular, to use my interview language, um is clearly everyone wants it. Everyone wants that to happen. But clarifying what exactly that means, what next steps are, is tricky point, start to do some strategy. The, the AOG, our local association of governments, is going through their federally mandated sense process, community economic development strategy. So they need to do a swap um for that, for their process. Um we did one of those last year with the support of RCAC that I thought was valuable. Um so I think that I'd like to piggyback on the need for our community to input into that regional plan for us to start the, the conversation internally about our own planning for economic development um. And even if we don't have economic diversification dollars for TRT, I think being really clear-eyed and, and identifying what is our goal as we look for additional resources or make long-term political strategy, whatever that looks like. Uh I think it's a super huge and important exercise. Uh so tho- those are kind of big things that I see this board working on in the next kind of six months, two year um. That, that's, that's me. So anybody else that wants to throw stuff out there?
Uh I know we mentioned talking about Matt Neeson wanting to do something for in his honor. Um so the chamber board has been throwing things around of like August had mentioned that there was potentially some funding that the, that come from the county um to do something on behalf of Matt Neeson. Um and what we've kind of landed on is his uh wife Amber came to us and said he is currently working on a project, was currently working on a project with his daughter for a shark tank within the schools. Um and just that she would think it would be really, a really cool program for us to do in his honor is, is create a community shark tank. And the chamber is extremely willing and prepared to host the event. Uh we do not want any members of the chamber board um as as people voting on it, judges. Um but we thought it would be kind of cool to be able to like link in some of like our state representatives and like have and be able to have it be something that we can actually utilize the event to maybe build some bridges. So that's kind of what we were.
They just did a shark tank in the, one of the, in the business class at the high school.
Right, that's, that was his daughter. I believe.
That was part of it, the shark tank thing you're saying. Just my son was part of it too.
Oh, right.
Build upon the class aspect and just broaden it into the community?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, make it just a big community event of, of like, you know, people would apply to have their ideas heard and then we just get little down until we have finalists and do a big community event.
The money is the big part.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I, I we have rural county grant money that's unallocated in this fiscal year, and then that could be a potential source depending on prioritization.
Right. And like how much we would think to even do that. And I think the, the chamber could, could deal with a lot of the expense of putting the event on.
Yeah.
Um but it would be like the prize money.
San Juan County started doing that last year. It was, it wasn't a lot of money, but they start helping the community that way.
And I think it would mean a lot to Matt's family.
So another option on that, as far as the funding goes, is we might be able to bring in the micro fund on that. Um I'll have to verify the age and make sure we're okay to utilize it for high schools. But we could run a high school micro fund that we're bringing in. Um and then everybody would get some funding. Um and they would get the experience. Um I can verify that. I have a meeting with them tomorrow.
Is that the Wildcat?
Yes.
Okay. Which you had, I think you mentioned something about the beginning of the meeting at the last statement.
It did.
Okay, do you want to expand on that?
So we're in the process of completing um a grant is the minority uh capital readiness grant. Um it's a four-year grant. Um and it was with Utah State Snow College, Weaver State and the Black Success Center. Um so it's a statewide program. Um but it would be able to back, backfill some of that administration that we talked about that we need for the micro fund. The great part is, under this grant, I know it says minority, but they also include rural businesses as minorities. And so it would cover pretty much all of our businesses within Grand San Juan and the Four Quarters area. And so um being that that is, it's actually incredibly beneficial for the entire area. So um hopefully, we're able to get all the letters of support that we need um from both businesses and organizations and agencies and then be able to put that in, cause that's four years worth of funding. Um that would help backfill the administration of that, which is really awesome.
That's a great opportunity for partnerships with the chamber, with USU, um with the high school and specifically. Um and the Small Business Development Center. It's almost a model for what we might look forward in the future in a venture fund or a venture conference fund. Um where businesses do the same thing only for larger amounts of money. And um it could become a model for young people to start thinking about their own business and what it takes to um create a business, run a business. And um I'm a proud graduate of junior achievement. Which many of you may not even have heard of.
I am also a graduate.
Are you?
Yeah, that's awesome. One of the things that I really like about the micro fund is it's it's once you get started and you go through the application process and you meet that minimum scoring criteria, you're guaranteed funds. You're competing against yourself. And so anybody that goes up and pitches and things like that, you still have to go through those, those steps. But you're still going to get funding in some way, shape or form. It's not like if I get my money, you're not gonna get yours when you're going up on a pitch deck. And so that makes a huge difference when we're putting together the business canvils and we're putting together those pitch decks. They know, if they know their business and they do what they need to do in order to put that together. Um and to pitch it and they meet that minimum score, they're going to get their funding, um which is a game changer. As we've watched businesses start to go through this, as we slowly started to trickle them through, um it's been a lot of fun. And it's three thousand dollars at, at a time. But the cool part is, is once they've spent that three thousand dollars and they can justify an additional pitch, they can go back and re-pitch to get an additional three thousand dollars up until they're getting five thousand dollars in monthly revenues. Which means most of our small businesses is are growing and they're getting through those initial phases, rather than going and getting a business on. A lot of them can come and do this repeatedly and get themselves standing and get themselves bankable to get a, a good loan rather than these high interest loans that we're seeing a lot of them get or on their credit cards or different things like that. So make, it's a game changer in a lot of ways.
Um just because I just went through this with my own child in the high school, he happened to be one of the top three people and won a little two hundred dollars, which was awesome. But he's sixteen years old, but his idea is actually one that would do incredibly well in this uh as a diversification slash thing for this community of, which is one of the reasons he did so well, but he's sixteen and I'm just wondering whether there's a way to potentially match these children who have these incredible ideas with an investor type situation. Maybe there are. He can run a business right now. He's sixteen years old and he doesn't have the time. He's going to school, he plays soccer, like there's no, nothing for him to do. A mentor slash somebody to, like a business partner.
And that's what we're seeing a lot out of the micro fund is those lineups with with a mentor or somebody that's in that same industry to kind of help them along or a partnership of some sort. We're seeing a lot of those kind of things come out or a lineup with a manufacturer that could do it for cheaper. Things like that. That's what we're seeing come out of a lot of these um micro fund pitches, cause they're going up and their judges are already in those industries, um are already of connections. Um and so we're creating those, the hope is that we create those, those type of situations. And that's what we've seen in the past five years. While they ran this in the four county area up north. And so bringing that down here just connects them into that network and that system, which will be really cool.
The judges were awesome here, but they're not necessarily people that can help you know, move things forward. But with London, you know, Matt, I know he was totally into all kinds of things like this. And I think I mean, I, I would hope that maybe it's becomes more of a, a yearly thing versus just this coming year, where it's that type of like, you know, the Bill Gates Foundation, it's the Matt Neeson.
I think that's the whole.
Idea.
And we just need to help get it off the ground.
Yeah.
But this kind of activity is exactly the kind of um support that is required to grow a business community and to strengthen it. And especially when you're focused on young people. Um it's an opportunity for them to spread their wings and test things out relatively low risk. Um but great opportunity to see, have an accomplishment in a competitive business environment. So you think that's a great. Others?
Um yeah, I have some comments with this because as a private sector and having multiple different businesses. What makes you to think of? So what are we dreaming of is let me go to the high school this year before the school ends, put a desk. And I'm really looking active, you know, young people who wanna do their own business. I am ready to share my whole businesses from now on. That's the idea I have. And then, believe me, there is no source. I wish the idea we are saying here, we have some candidates for this. I mean, this is in my um understanding, there is, looks like me, no one, no interest in this, maybe, which I don't know. If you have any ideas, specifically like how to find those young talents or people who are looking for the money or business business ownership, but I do know many business owners around me, I would say up to ten different businesses. They are ready to share their companies in some shareholder part, but there is no person. Am I wrong with this? But I, I would like to hear your ideas as, as a part of this committee. Do you guys have any ideas with that? Like how, how we can reach out to these people?
When, when you say um how could people become, how could the business people interact with young people?
Yes.
Um and in a way that's a mentoring relate, coaching relationship, almost an on, on-the-job training kind of relationship.
Exactly.
Um and then they become, they may, might become employees, they might have internships.
They might have partnerships as well. But I mean, I am as a business owner, ready to do that, but I think we need some uh navigators who can direct me to the right sources, right? This, that's my question. I see. The idea is awesome, what Megan said, that's awesome. We support it, but are there really available individuals who wants to have that, you know, uh mentorship, partnership or even?
Well, as far as, this idea has pretty much just been in a chain of emails so far, like we have not dove in, that's just finally came up to that idea, cause that's where Amber helped lead us. So there's a lot of development that has to go into before we even, and those are some of the questions we have to kind of answer.
With all these kids that are taking the business pathway in the high school, which like I said, my son in London happens to be part of, are also, you know, there's however many students in each of those classes. But they're sixteen and seventeen and some of them are eighteen, so it's an age discrepancy in terms of, I, that's where that happens in terms of business ownership, right? But there's a lot of them that are doing, they're Salt Lake, hopefully trying to come back now from a DECA conference, which is the can't tell you what that acronym is, but it's entrepreneurial uh kids who are interested in business and marketing and, and they just, they didn't make it to, they didn't they didn't win the states, they're not going to nationals, but they did very well. But those are all kids, seven different kids that came from that business class in the high school that are, just went up to do those conferences. And those are an annual, you know, all-year-long leadership type thing too. So there's ways to get in, it's just a relationship with even the professors, you know.
And I think this, what you're talking about, your idea is the way like it will happen.
Well, I, she was leaning towards like us doing a community one, not necessarily focusing on high school age kids.
Right.
That's, yeah, that's, that's an example. It's the high school, but I, I hope we have some.
But it sounds to me like you're maybe looking for something that's more at the college level. Where students be ready to jump out and, and take on, like, I mean, that's the problem. Someone in high school isn't ready to, to start running a business. But the, but somebody a little bit older would be. I mean, a partnership with USU or something like that, or a community event that pulls in sponsorship from both the high school and USU, like that's the way to get this, a community started that can really feed the business community and, and be mentored by the business community here.
So actually, I came from an entrepreneur university. So when you finish uh all your classes, the last class is just one class at the end of that semester, just make your own business. And you have a lot of confidence. And then that director of the university, all those coming and say, okay, it's gonna make a competition. And then that, the group who wins is, they become the incubator. So this is an incubator program. And all the university, they're gonna give you the money, they're gonna provide you, they're gonna give you a mentor, another thing, and they're gonna make success for your business. But I think for a kid, I don't know if that kids are ready for that.
Right.
Because the kid has to go to the university. They, I don't know if they want to start a business, I don't know if they wanna go to do a sport. But I think someone that is ready to finish the university, what's the next step in my life? So and the university help you with that, with your business and then after two years, you are alone.
Well, the chamber did just start, uh we just created an events committee. So we would love anybody that wants to be on that committee.
Check in. Anything else we can call this concept or grow our own?
I like it.
Concept and we can fill in the gaps as we move forward. Um at what levels and what pockets of the community. Um several people here have, have talked about all the resources we have in our community. And um I unwittingly sent August and Ben my re, my rethinking of the idea of the request or qualifications for the major strategic plan. And I looked through the fact that we were asking them to review sixteen different documents. Most of them from Grand County, some from Moab, some from uh the organization of counties, some from the governor's office. A lot of the ideas that we're looking at are already in those plans. A lot of ideas came out of the Moab tomorrow together. Exercise some very specific things. And it seems to me that as we move forward, our future conversation can be about how do we put our arms around all of those things and try to figure out how with August and Ben and the, the staff. How do we set some priorities? There are lots of reports, there are lots of plans, but it all comes down to what we do with them. And with the, with the talent that we've had on this board and training the board with the talent that's in this community that we're discovering. Um, I think there's a way for us to think about our own community driven coalition of making a plan work or developing a plan and more importantly, making it work. And something that we ought to be discussing at our next meeting or two, does that make sense?
Yeah.
One other thing I was gonna add was, right before this bill kind of process sidelined silver planning. Um, we had started conversations kind of between um, the folks who are doing kind of career and technical education at USU and the folks doing the same at the high school and kind of started the somewhat of a similar dialogue process to what we did with childcare around, let's get all of the partners in a room and kind of like have no presuppositions to just talk about what are the needs or the opportunities, um, and I think that that um, Megan was a part of that conversation as well, and I think that um we still intend to pursue that even though maybe we don't have like a war chest of money to immediately throw at it, um. And I think those are a lot of the same partners who'd be involved in, in uh, business development, kind of uh, ecosystem as well. Megan, I don't know, were you gonna say something there?
I don't remember, sorry, ADHD kicked in pretty quick.
But I just wanted to flag that was, that's another thing that we've kind of uh, started and, and have some conversations about. And uh, kind of another piece to that, that Jeremy, who works at the um, for the school district is flagged is, is this, this concern where the, the ability to earn money uh, uh, kind of as part of the labor market. Even if you're still in high school, it's so strong and it's, it's pulling some of our kids kind of out of the high school pathway. Um, and it's a result of our labor shortage, rent of the appealing rates that we offer in a community, so that's, that's a real tricky multifaceted systems level problem. Um, but something that he wanted to start a conversation about as well, so, so that's, that, there will be an opportunity for kind of a roundtable on that. Um, kind of as well, just want to flag that as something that's floating around. Um, we're not necessarily driving, but um, very well made.
And support.
Yeah. I think Kelly raised her hand.
Well, kind of moved on, but um, just around the conversation with career and technical education, even if there's not funding from the county, there's a fair amount of funding to help support people to get an education both from the schools and from other sources, including workforce services. So I think it's something to pursue, even if there isn't a lot of funding in one big war chest, as you described it. So I, I think there's, there, I think there's some opportunity there.
August, how would you like us to proceed on this agenda topic, which is about future agenda topics?
Um, if anybody else has anything that, or Jasmine, I don't have, or isn't.
Yeah, I just had one thing, um, kind of a long look with August first, uh, what he was discussing about the first, the future agenda items. I know, you know, we'll have changes to the county's funding sources potentially, but I'm curious if we can, um, for the benefit of this board, maybe have a better understanding of what other assets the county has that aside from funding, that might be beneficial to that conversation. I also think the bringing in Utah State, cause there's a lot of things that I know that's coming down, that's not necessarily guaranteed. There are like grants and things like that, but might be good to have in those conversations and I can follow up with those PIs and, and see where, where those grants are. Like the aspire grant, that's a ten year multimillion dollar grant and things like that, but can really have an impact on those areas too.
Yeah, so I, I mean, that sounds like an asset mapping exercise that would be tied to, um, I think a planning process. And, and, and I, you know, I think a planning process is a living, breathing exercise of this board is really a part of, rather than we do it once, you know, in a day and we go pick it out. Which we'll still do along the way, but um. Yeah, so it sounds good, I like it.
I, I guess just, you know, thinking about the future agenda items and August, you sort of talked about, when we come back, we'll know where we stand and you'll have some ideas for us about where we might want to focus. I mean, I guess I would just put a, a call out to all of us here to be thinking creatively about, you know, like essentially we might have some space opening up on our agenda as a committee, as a board. And we should all be thinking about, you know, what ideas we might put on the table, so that we come in instead of just hear from you what our options are and then choose between those two or three. I mean, it'd be great if we show up with ideas too, that maybe you're not considering yet as to how we can use the board, how we can use our convening power, how we can use the minds that we have around the table. You know, if we do have some, some space open up essentially, um.
So like that to be a part of the discussion too.
Um, I, that's, that would be great, that's the kind of productivity we need and say that this is probably again more of bulk of our office, just working on multiple things at once, but um, part of this or submissions to disperse these rural county grant funds that we get from the state. And I, I feel like oftentimes we are, you know, trying to disperse them at the last minute, we have like two meetings left before the summer, we're trying to figure it out. And the reality is we have this money right now. Um, we don't need to be waiting that long and, and it's this board's discretion on how we spend it. Um, so you know, whether it's, you know, buying like we did for, for us to that grant to that housing event series or it's something that we're talking about now. These, these funds are available now and doing things at the last minute is never the best option, so I definitely think like that aspect of proactive nature, like thinking about what this board can do in general is great, and then also thinking specifically about what it wants to do that aligns with those funds. And then when we put into our application to the governor's office and received, we can potentially make this action soon. You know, and it's always better to do them sooner than later.
So do we have like a, like a living, breathing document of like current projects that we're talking about and what amount of funds we currently have?
Yeah, and, and so that's what I think would be probably agenda number one at the next meeting in March. Um, and, and so, and I should clarify, technically the county commission has the whole uh, discretion of how we spend this money, but that fully this body, yeah, recommending, you can see. Uh, I know you, you know that, but I just want to clarify that for everybody.
Our role really is bringing things to the table too, that are like, hey, here's a great.
Yeah.
Thought process of how to use, utilize someone is.
Totally, this is the laboratory. Um, which I think is a really exciting opportunity and has been great, honestly, so far. Um, so, so, so next um, steps on this is that I'll take this list. Uh, ra- uh, uh, forced and then I will kind of put a tentative agenda together sometime in March. Um, and we'll try to basically pitch that out to you with enough different feedback and input, um. Uh, so that by the time we have the next meeting, we feel like we're working and talking about stuff that we feel we should be working and talking about. Um, and have a bit of uh, homework done, so that we can kind of have productive. Yeah, uh, yeah.
I think what we've learned through the exercise and especially through the negotiations you all have had with the state. Economic development is not really understood by most people. And economic diversification even is even less understood. And what we're really talking about is building a community. Building a community that can support businesses that can create jobs and give people an opportunity to have a living. And that's the kind of community I think Moab is. Um, we just need to figure out how to accelerate and create a springboard for that. And I think this is the time to do it, this is the time to do it. So, are you going on vacation tomorrow or are you just waiting till the day after the summit?
The day after the legislative session. So the session's over next Friday.
Getting communicated.
Yeah, I would state when I found that real lack of understanding is one of the big complaints they had was that when we gave someone's grants, it was for housing and daycare. I said, well, that's the infrastructure, that's the infrastructure, if we don't have those two things, we can't build the, uh, our economic diversification. And they said, well, that's not the intent of the money.
Yeah.
I said, but how can we, I mean, it was like, I mean, they just did not. But they were just, in my opinion, hunting for a reason to. Seriously, they're really good. You know, cause everything we would tell them. Then there would be another reason, like the first thing was we were being audited because of the grants. We proved that wrong, oh, we're not supporting it because.
So as that pertains to future agenda, I think for me, it's education and how do we, I think something I've been, I've been about is can we do like a, you know, grand legislative summit or something like that, summertime or something where legislators are not busy. And, you know, we highlight the projects, we highlight the needs of our community. We go out of our way as, you know, with our county commission, but the officials to our neighboring counties get to know you know, what's going on in Emery and Carbon and, and for those, what is the priority of those legislators, can we build a larger coalition? Who is aware of the real issues and supportive, um, so that next time around, like this happens. We have people who say, yeah, actually this is really important and then we have a large chorus of folks who are like, yeah, bought in, this is awesome.
So, yeah, when we bring down the legislative, it should, it would be good to have this committee.
Yeah, that's a larger feature project, yeah.
But also linked to the, the planning process, right? I mean, a, a good planning document would be built around the vision that explains this all very clearly and concisely, I mean, so that the link between housing and economic development and economic diversification is it's obvious given the context that we live in.
Kind of super stupid question.
Okay, so I'm not the chair anyway.
I feel like this is historical knowledge, that's why I like, I feel like I'm playing a little bit of catch up, but we took the, the belt, economic development and economic diversification and made it one.
Those two words, yeah.
So do we have like a clear and concise mission as to what, like, like how those rural funds should be spent and like what our goal is within our community, cause I was digging and.
Yeah, and the only thing that's like, um, set in stone is what's in the uh, the bylaws. Uh, which combines, um, there's some wherethes that kind of outline that, the resolution that created the new combined body. So there's some good language in there, um, but that's not technically in the bylaws, it's, you know, the resolution that created the bylaws, so I can find those and try to get them over, but there's not, there's not necessarily like, one, one of the other documents is there's economic diversification uh, action plan that was created that has some of that language that was adopted by the, by the commission, but there's not. I think to your.
For this joint board?
No, I think to your question, we don't have, there, there is necessarily a charter or a mandate that's like super clear that this board has created for itself. If that makes sense.
I just, I, my one concern that it feels like in some of the language that everyone's using is that it feels like we're leaning towards strictly diversification, when it doesn't feel like that's what this board is intended for. So I'm just, I'm just trying to get a clear.
Yeah, well, I think, I think the, the way that it's been, we're kind of trying to manage it is that the we have two pots of funds and the rural county grant funds have kind of been towards things that are gonna be supportive of the community whole, right? Childcare is gonna support every employer, that for the same. Exactly, and so that's kind of, that's kind of how it's been split up and then the idea is that like diversification funding and advice on that is like targeted towards that particular mission, um, but I think it's been somewhat joint.
Okay, I just wanted some clarity.
Yeah.
Know how to support this.
Yeah.
It may be as we move forward that we another look at the bylaws. As I read them, they're really focused on the rural county grant program.
Yeah.
Um, and some of the dates are what I would consider near term for what we're, we're gonna be trying to accomplish over the next five to ten years. So not that anybody likes to go through amended bylaws, but it might be.
For the chamber, it was good time.
It was a good time.
It was a good time.
Well, maybe it's something.
And to that, I mean, we did, we reviewed bylaws last meeting and I think, um, as a result of basically identifying that almost every sub community or voluntary board in the county's bylaws are a little different that but Mallory and Stephen and other folks that like having a uniform template for every committee bylaws or something that they're working on and so will, there will be a revision at one point, and that'll be an opportunity to review like what the charter and mandate.
I just love some, some clarity on like what are, maybe we come up with goals for twenty twenty three. Or, you know, like have some short intermediary and long term goals of like what we really want to accomplish and I would love to understand what the grant guidelines are.
Yeah.
You know, is it super vague?
It is very common to me, what Shelly says, honestly, and that was my first questions, honestly, to the board. Now, like, you know, it, it's a little bit complicated at first, but lately you get some, some inputs, then you understand. But to me, it still looks like me, I'm including myself to this. I think in some level of understanding and education, every member who sits on this table needed. And like we talked before, and then we are going to do with, with, with the offer today, like, you know, having the priorities and the agenda. Putting in line execution, so that's the thing, because don't get me wrong, like again, I'm repeating the same thing in my first meeting. Since two thousand nine, I just got whole information, what we told in the sports. Again, same issues, yeah, so it looks like me, please don't get me wrong again, I don't wanna be rude, but as a grand county, Moab City, we have so fast, things changing, population is increasing. Uh, place is getting enlarged, but same issues keep going, so as a, as a EDA developments, uh, economic development advisory board, like, you know, trying to making our core business, instead of you're just like trying to find out solution like Mary said, like, we're still on the side of infrastructure, so. And just forget to develop it, you're still trying to survive kind of, so.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a little bit, like, I think we need to come up together, not only as a EDA here. With the grand county separately, maybe individually, I don't know, but like, you know, there, there are many subjects to be spoken. And come up with one or a couple of solutions and to go to the capital and then requesting the writings, instead of they're judging us misusing our sources, like, instead of development or diversity spending to the housing. Isn't it like, you know, something, yeah, I mean. And all these years from two thousand nine till here, it's, it's a long time, so.
Shelly, would it be helpful if, if the, a general description of the rural county's grant program was circulated? That you had a copy of it and sort of a summary of the goals of it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I feel like, not just clarity to me, but there, I don't know, there's a lot of people in our community that have clarity on what that grant is for, and I think one of the most powerful things we can do to be effective is transparency, you know, that way like people aren't going finger pointing, I mean, I think this Phil Liman thing, in my opinion, was, stems from lack of, lack of education.
And communication, I would say, that's the prior, the communication.
Right, for sure, so that I just, the more transparent I think we can be as an advisor role, the more effective we're gonna be.
So maybe I'll add on here is, uh, you know, whatever, whatever, however this board is listed publicly on our county websites. That's something we can talk about and say, what should we have on, or what is missing?
It's a great.
So I'll add, I'll add that.
I'm excited to be part of it.
Anything else for the good of the order? Questions?
I just wanted to say I got a, a response back from the micro fund and we can use it for high school entrepreneurs and so we can, um, continue talks about utilizing some of that funding, um, maybe doing a pitch a semester might be kind of fun, it'll help build the business. Instructors, whatever they're doing, um, I'm not sure how that back, backfilled or anything like that. Um, cause I haven't crossed into that territory yet, but definitely something that we can work on.
Can we, like the chamber, we can reach out to you, maybe you can come have a quick sit down with us and see how we can utilize it if we're gonna do it for like the Matt Nissen shirt, shirt tank.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay. If there's nothing else, August and Ben, thank you for everything, um, have a great summit next week.
Sorry.
My disclaimer, I too will not be there, um, but I will be. My disclaimer, I too will not be there, um, but I will be. Pardon?
You're presenting. Now, he's, he's with me, we are presenting.
Discover Moab and the Moab Museum are going to be selling our wonderful, bountiful services and duty to. Tour and travel op, travel and tour operators at the annual Go West Summit in Anchorage.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'll take orders, there is a shipping and handling fee. If there's nothing else, let's adjourn. Thank you all.
Bye, everybody.